Have an ambulance, so I can't call anybody. But we have a special.
You have a nurse sitting right here. If a cardiac problem, I can take care of you. Do you want to stand for the flesh?
Nothing wrong with it, but if you're watching guns, watch balls.
Wait till that's just not true what is going.
Okay, you all set?
For all. The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, um, application we have is for Amalia Diaz. Uh, do you want to just, cause she's, um, up to say, living in a pool or trying to put tequila and she lives on Tracy Drive, but it's surrounded on three sides by Cherokee and Algonquin Beach. So she has a fortunate coincidence of having three front setbacks. And she's trying to put the pool on the back or the side of her house. Do you want to describe what you're doing and?
Yes, I live right on the corner of, uh, Tracy Road. So as you come off of sixty-six onto Algonquin Beach, uh, Beach Lane, um, I'm the first row right there on your, um, left. And I'm the house right there on the corner. And, um, and then I have Cherokee Lane that comes on the other side of the house. Uh, what would be considered my backyard, I, there's my septic tank and leach field. So I, we can't put a pool there. Um, and the next best place will be on our side of the house that's right, um, next to Cherokee Lane. Um, and because of it's a road that will be considered also up front. When I first came to see what I had to do, no, I first started looking at pools and when they, when they told, we showed us pictures of where we wanted it, the places told us, no, you need to go get town permission and a variance for the side of your house. Cause you look, you live in a corner lot. Um, so then I came here just, and that's, I was told twenty feet from Cherokee Lane, fifty from, uh, from Tracy Road. That's our front and ten from the house. Those numbers, perfect for this spot that we want. But then it came back that, no, because it's also a corner lot. It will be considered also up front. So it will be fifty from Cherokee Lane and fifty from the front and ten from the house. And that's where I need a variance because it gives us no space whatsoever. So we'd like variance so we can put in a pool of minimum of sixteen by thirty-two, let's say. I did include in the application photos, um, and there's measurements from the front of the house, from the different, the back of the, the backyard are aligned to the house, our side, um, Algonquin Beach Lane to the house from Tracy and from Cherokee.
Well, here's the idea, but I just didn't see the pictures.
The pictures are there.
Oh, I see, it's coming.
And it's coming around. This is, and this is just on the diagram. It's a sixty-eight foot side that we're looking at. Page of the application.
So it's behind the front of the house?
It would be on the side of the house. It won't be behind the house.
I mean, so the whole pool will be behind the front?
Yes, it will be behind the front of the house. It's, uh, from Cher, from Tracy to the front of the house, it would be, we have more than enough space. It's from Cherokee Lane to the side of the house.
Um, I think the other question is, uh, two of the questions. One is it an above ground pool or an in-ground pool?
We would like an in-ground pool.
And so that probably requires fence too, right?
Yes.
So that can be a variance for that as well.
Oh, really? A separate variance?
Uh, well, I mean, there's separate requirement for fences, but I guess it'll all be one variance.
Yeah, it'll be one variance.
Yeah, but the fence would, would count, so.
You mean the fence would be in the, within the fifty feet? Or are you talking about just the?
Well, there's a different requirement for fences, right? Right, depending on the height, how, how high, four foot high fence, chain link?
It'll probably be a higher six feet. Cause we don't like our privacy. It, it will right in the corner. So anybody that drives by or walks by would be considered.
You have the ball, that's, that is a, that is a thing too, our fences. So the fences shall not exceed six feet in height when erected inside of rear yards, four feet in height when erected, then twenty-five feet of the front lot line. So if it would be, so this against the front. So the fence wind up being closer to twenty-five, closer than twenty-five feet from the road?
Yes.
Let me ask you, is the twenty foot, is that? So you've got the house ten feet you're gonna start, then the pool, then the cement on the side. Where does the twenty feet come? Does it come at the fence level or is the fence beyond the twenty feet?
No, the, the fence will be at.
If you want to help the draw too, it's easier.
So I'm, I'm looking at this picture. This is where, this is where it says, is this gonna be the pool here? What is, what is this picture?
I drew it on my copy. It would be.
Okay.
Cherokee Lane is right here, Tracy. So it would be, um, after twenty feet, it would be the pool. And after the ten feet, it will be the pool right here. The ten, the, the fence, my understanding is, has to be by law twenty-five feet from the middle of the road.
The property line is approximately twenty-five feet. That's your property line. Then you have to go do the setback from there back, not from the center of the road.
No, yeah, exactly. I think, I think we're on the line.
The ten, the ten feet from the?
The house, the ten feet from the house.
Water starts?
No, that would be from where the concrete will start. And it will be three feet of concrete. Cause that's how they do it. Three feet of concrete and then it will be the water. And it'd be, and the water will be sixteen feet, yes.
So then nineteen. Twenty-nine, you're at twenty-nine feet of the sixty-eight feet to get to the other side of the water.
Yes.
Yeah, sixteen plus three plus ten.
No, cause it will be sixteen, um, three plus sixteen plus another three and then the fence.
Yeah, the ten, the three, the sixteen.
Yes.
And that just gets to the other end of the six. I'm just looking for math. So that's thirteen, so that's twenty-nine feet. There's still thirty-nine feet left out here.
So is your ha, is this, your house is sixty-eight feet from that property line?
From, yes, from Cherokee Lane, yes.
From the, how did you measure that? Or how do you know that?
Uh, because my husband works construction and he has a laser that does exact measurement from the.
But is he, where did he measure from pavement?
From the pavement, yes.
Okay. So it's not sixty-eight, it's sixty-eight, but the pavement's probably, uh, well, the property line is saying the pavement's ten feet back. It's gotta come back.
Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't have to be.
Another ten, fifteen feet further.
Another, yes, exactly. Yes.
Did, did they ever give you a plot plan when you bought the house to actually survey to show us where the house is?
Um, I think I gave, I gave a copy.
That would help if you had it. You probably have it, you know, this is the trailer you developed.
Right there. Is that, is that?
This is what we're, we're, what, what?
It's the assessor's map.
Yeah, this is just, there's a, there should be like a detailed map like, that looks like, um. This is, this is another.
Yeah, that is, was that it?
I think I do, I just have to look into, I don't know what I'm looking for.
It should look like, you know, some kind of a drawing that.
That looks like an engineering drawing.
How long ago did you close on your house?
Over a year and a half though.
So it's in all your closing documents?
Yes, yes, yes.
And that, that enormous stack of papers that you had to sign your life away for?
Yes.
That one, you'll find it in there.
Yes.
Um, and that's really just to get the exact number to where any of the variants from.
There's quite a lot of requirements, uh, of the fences here to comply because we're on quarter lot, this is special. I'm sorry, what?
What does it say?
So on a corner lot in any district, no fence, wall edge or other structure, anything made more than three feet in height shall be erected, placed or maintained, which obstructs visibility of vehicular traffic. Within the triangular area formed by the intersection of street right-of-way lines, a street line joining said lines at point fifty feet distance from the point of intersection, littered along said lines. So that's super clear, right?
If the train leaves Chicago, it's heading west.
Uh, a train ain't left California, so.
The triangular area formed by intersection where the street right-of-way lines, street line joining said lines.
So basically you gotta make a triangle. Yeah, the only thing here, what's interesting about though is that the visibility is pretty good. Cause the front actually comes out like this.
At least fifteen feet.
Yeah, so you're delivering there.
But I'm just, yeah, I'm just.
Basically it's like this. It's not really. So somebody here. Somebody here share of visibility.
But I'm just saying, the requirement says we gotta go back fifty feet here.
Yeah, that's.
No, what'd you say, three feet to four foot fence?
That's good then. So, yeah, so that's, so that's. Yeah, cause that point is gonna be in front of the house and as long as the pool's back on that side of the house. Yeah, the fence and the. Well, if it's in the way. You mean, if, if you're, if, if the fence is in this zone, you can't be more than. Yeah, and it's, it doesn't really seem to be.
So for those of us at the end of the, you know what you're saying? You're nutty on.
Just so we can all.
Yes.
So I'm gonna just say, so the. Look at this picture here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there's a, if you take fifty feet off of Tracy Road, fifty feet off of Cherokee Lane and go in, you're gonna have a point out here.
Mm-hmm.
That's where your, that black, uh, thing is, if you were to put a fence in that area.
I, I don't think I would. It's this area.
It's this area here.
So I think it's probably.
Okay, so then, and most of that is pavement. So if you were to put a fence here, you can't go over three feet.
Well, our fence wouldn't, we wouldn't put the fence over in that area.
Yeah, especially when.
Well, if you look, the thing is, I think if I, if we get to copy this map, which is probably upstairs, it's, it's not a, doesn't look like that. It's a big, it's a giant curve.
Yes.
The property line is what, the property line is probably like.
Yeah, that, that's what I asked here. Cause it's really like this. And the visibility is pretty good from here to here. Like the property is on a, it's a, it's a corner.
It's a corner. So it's on a big curve.
It's not a straight point. It's, it's actually a, like a radius. So it looks like that's not, I don't believe you're doing anything in this area.
No, no, no. In general, we want it to do it. We just want right here in this area. And we'll do a fence right here to go with the line of the house from Cherokee.
Right, but you'll be fifty feet, as long as you're past fifty foot mark, you could do, she could do a six-foot fence here, correct?
Yeah, she's not gonna be past the fifty foot. Uh, it's not fifty, it goes twenty-five.
Yeah, so then, but she's not gonna be.
Now from Cherokee to here on the side.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five.
Four foot, if you're within twenty-five, not six. So you might be stuck with four feet, but that's enough for the pool.
Well, no, but she wants fences too.
Yeah.
So the variance would, would be for. Four feet when erected within twenty-five feet of the front lot line, even though this is, that's the front lot line too. So if you're within twenty-five feet, you gotta be down to four on that. So very much you get a, right, so you get a variance from that too.
Right, so you would get a variance.
That's a variance?
No, it'll vary.
Oh, I'm saying.
Same thing. So the number's twenty feet.
Yes.
From Cherokee Lane, then thanks to Paul reading, so we'd need to get a variance for from fifty foot to twenty foot. On Cherokee Lane, front setback plus another variance for the six-foot fence to four-foot fence. If it's within that twenty-five foot setback, it for some reason it's, I mean, you could always not use the variance.
Okay.
But it makes sense to get it or ask for it.
Do you understand that, that's about the fence?
Well, I understood.
I mean, you can read it and I can give you this section. It's one fifty dash twenty. So basically if the fence is any closer to the, the street than twenty-five.
Then it has to be four, four, um, forty. And then if it's more than twenty-five, it can't be sixty. But then.
So it looks like, I mean, if, if all these numbers are right, then you might not be the sixty.
Okay.
Yeah, and thirty-two, thirty-nine feet.
Double whammy, cause otherwise one of these could be a side, you know?
Well, that's the, you know.
So basically after the water's edge on the far side towards Cherokee, you have fourteen feet before you hit the twenty-five foot.
Yes.
Line, if, if the sixty-five is correct. So.
Just be aware.
Yeah, but just include that in the variance anyway.
Looks like I do.
So where would I do that?
So just write it, um. So front setback.
What's the size of your pool again, sixteen by?
We're looking at sixteen by thirty-two. That's the biggest that I'm looking at. It could be small, but.
As like an accessory structure?
Or maybe a. Yeah, it's one.
This depends on the size of the structure. It's to attach some building structure use it, which is customary incident to that of a principal building and located in the same lot. Not what we have in particular.
This is, so the front setback. I know my, mine was just, mine isn't her actual, that was just me stacking it up.
Well, then definitely, I mean, if your, if your pool's gonna be on twenty feet from the, from the property line, that fence would definitely be.
Right.
Yes, it would be that's the twenty-five.
Right, you'll have the pool and then three feet of concrete.
This is the actual minimum.
And then probably at least three feet of grass, so you can get around that thing.
Or she might put five feet up here.
Right on the concrete.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
And then the other thing is a setback is.
Well, then, yeah, so then.
I think that's. Yeah, I don't think the pool's gonna be. Like the edge of the.
Do you have your, your sketch again?
Yes, but, well. This is eyeballed. I, we didn't actually.
That's what I'm saying. So if this is, if this dimension here is twenty, then there needs to be a fence here.
Yes. Yes, exactly, yeah.
So, I mean, so you decide what it's gonna be before they can grant the variance. Um, but it would be something like a fifteen foot.
I would, that's more, yes, exactly.
You don't need to set, I exclude it from the road for the fence. You just need to determine where it is to the height to grant variance to the fence. Cause the fence isn't, is allowed to be in that side.
Yeah, it's allowed to be there.
It's just the height.
It's the pool and then that other twenty-five foot is whether or not the fence can be, you can grant the relief for the fence in that area. See what I'm saying? You don't measure the fence, you measure the pool. Where, this gives her the relief to put the fence within twenty feet of the property line. At a height. At a height of six feet. Six, right? Cause you're allowed. It's a difference between.
Right, but are, are we allowing it right up to the property line?
You are allowed to have a fence there. It's just a question of how high it can be.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the pool that you have to get the setback variance from and then the fence, you know, height variance for both area variances of all the numbers in the code.
Okay.
So you're letting her have a six-foot fence instead of a four-foot fence. So you wanna have a pool if you are letting her do this.
Yes.
At a certain distance.
Okay.
Last bend required. Okay, so then, just to recap for everybody, we're. You know, it's a proposal of a fifty-foot required code for the front setback. Requested dimension is twenty feet. The difference is thirty feet. And then for the, yeah, for the pool structure, the fence, the required code is four foot, requesting six foot with a difference of two feet. And this, that's all on Cherokee Lane side. Behind the first fifty foot setback. So it's all, all basically behind the house.
And so I guess, yeah.
The.
Yeah, so as long as the pool itself is all behind the line, but front of the house, then I think you don't have any issues.
Okay.
Thirty-two feet seems big for that.
Mm-hmm.
As long as that fence.
Yeah, I have this room behind too.
You're up, you can't go be this way because of septic systems.
Yes, it's right back there. Yes. That's why, yeah.
That's good. That would be a more private place to put it.
Yes, it would be perfect too. And it will have more space and everything. But nope, we have the leach field back there in the septic. I don't know.
So then, uh, I think to make a motion is schedule a public hearing for the next regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could you see if you have another drawing that would show, you know, you might have it in your closing papers?
Mm-hmm. I will look through my papers.
Where the house is oriented, cause we really can't tell on, on these curb lots, the house could be twisted. I don't know how it might be. I tried to bring it up on my phone, but we have no cell service in here to see if I could see it.
Um, yes, I can look at my papers and I'll bring it.
If you could just give it to Stephanie sometime before the, uh, the meeting.
Yes.
And next is, um, Mike.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'm Scott Crone. I'm representing Mike Vasal in regards to an area variance application, uh, for a vacant property on Abbott Drive, one's known, I believe, as Springview Development. And what we're seeking to do, uh, in this application is it appears as though the town has a two-acre minimum, uh, that was invoked for, uh, certain lot sizes. This particular lot is point five two. And we believe in the area variance applications that our standing would be that this lot was a lot of record prior to the change. And in that particular area, all of the existing homes are built on that same approximate size lot. And furthermore, uh, which I did not include in the application, as I found out just recently, uh, the town, when water, public water was put in, put a curb stop on each of the properties. This one, of course, has that same curb stop, uh, in order to follow suit with the rest of the properties. So it appears as though the town is also in the same mindset as we were, that it's like a building lot at some point.
So this is in the RA district. Is that twice to the acres? I'm assuming that's.
I thought it was just in the R.
No.
So even that, okay. So my, my mistake on that, that's even better. So we are point five two then, uh, of what the lot contains.
And then we were denied a permit. I was wondering, is this, do you want our, can this? So the, the, the ability to build on that lot, he does have the ability to build, but he will probably need setback variances, just similar to the ones you were just discussing. So you need to know, correct, how big that building is gonna be in relation to those setbacks.
Right. And so I did supply, uh, a site plan and some drawings for, for review purposes. Of course, that particular plot or that particular plan could be curtailed if need be.
You know what this ends up doing on there is?
And as a co-representative for this meeting, I have the prior owner here who's also very knowledgeable of that property and maybe able to share some important information.
Just my, my, one of the co-representatives. I actually was the prior owner of that lot and fifty-six Abbott Drive. Um, and I purchased that lot originally. My intention was like a barn or something like that, but we ended up coming through the town with Bob and it was told that it has to be a primary residence only put on that lot. I wasn't able to put a barn or any other structure on that without going through other variances and things like that. He goes, the lot is set up for a half acre primary residence. So that was part of the reason why I'm like, I'm not building another house there. So we ended up changing over and going that route. So we had, we didn't have the curb stop. We had the older hookups. We had everything we talked to with Bob several times over the course of the past seven years, from when I first purchased it up until we transferred it over to Mr. Sal to proceed with this route. So if anybody has any questions about any of that aspect of that, more than willing to answer some of those.
Which, I, I don't see, I, I'm sorry, which, do you have a map? I see all your house.
I should have had everything included for you, including the map.
Oh, okay.
Fifty, fifty-six, and this lot we're talking about is in the square in the center of Abbott Drive.
Yes.
Um. So as, as soon as you go up T, it's that trade lot right there.
There's the one trade lot.
Yep.
Yeah, correct.
So the other three houses we have all the, uh, the gups. And I know for a fact that that well is no longer active. I mean, I know that's still, but that well is not an active well. It hasn't been for the past twelve years now. I hooked up the public water when I purchased the house back in two thousand and twelve. I had an FHA one at the time. So the requirement was I had hooked public water and I had to terminate full use of that well. So that.
So according to this plan, you're not asking for any?
I'm only asking if we're, we have the ability to build on that lot.
Correct.
I haven't gone forward with anything else. I've also included for your review, all prior deeds. And I believe they go all the way back to the sixties, noting this lot is what it is.
So there is a specific provision in your code, existing lots of records, corrupting contained insurance shall prohibit the use of the existing lot of record unless the prescribed area with or death, if such existing lot of record was owned individually or separate from any adjoining tract at the time, equivalent enactment of this chapter provided in all other provisions of the chapter met, which is what I was suggesting that you might need some other variances. Which is what I was suggesting, that you might need some other variances, but I don't know that you do.
So basically the building is gonna meet all the setback requirements?
It should meet everything per our engineer plan.
So is there even a need for variance?
I don't think so.
So why, why list the building?
We were denied, uh, by Tracy Church just due to the fact that in our discussion, that it was a point five two lot and Tracy had mentioned the two acres.
Insistent about two acre minimum.
Yeah.
Even though the two acres is still.
Right, so you, right, so whether it's one or two, we thought it was prudent to come forth and ask for an area variance.
You, you can make an interpretation that he fits this.
Yeah.
Does it have the setbacks on that?
Excuse me?
Does it have to require, uh?
Well, he needs, he needs the setbacks.
He did, he put them on here, fifty front, twenty-five sides.
And another fifty front.
And, uh, should be, is it?
Because where, I, I have to look at your plans there.
Sure.
And where the septic system's going, it's gonna have to be, number one, a buildup system, because it's wetter than hell there.
Well, they have to.
And, and it, it has failed per test in the past, so would have to be a buildup system. Pardon?
I, I've never per tested.
No, you didn't, but it was.
Somebody before me did.
Yes, yes, it was per, and, uh, you know, that's why it, it would have to have fil, you know, a buildup system.
Well, they'd have to.
There probably have to be a setback for that.
Well, they, not necessarily, they, they need to get a county approved.
Right.
Thing before they build, so that's really between.
Yeah, that's between. But it, it's still, you gotta figure it in for a setback if it's a buildup system.
No, no setback, it's only, uh, I think it's, no, maybe ten feet, wells are ten feet from a property.
Is it only ten, okay.
Yeah, yeah, septic systems aren't like structures.
I do have a couple of questions on it.
Sure.
And seen, because I live right across the street, and, uh, the driveway that you propose there, do you know how long that's gonna take?
Uh, I believe it's on there, but, uh, you know, off the top of my head, I don't, unfortunately I look at so many projects. I'm not sure.
It's like about fifty, about fifty feet.
Oh, okay, so being the park with the cars in there, now the only other thing is gonna be snow removal, because as you know, there's three, three lots, uh, three corner lots. Three driveways that come to that corner. And right now DJ has a hell of a time.
Actually.
You know, plowing.
You may have misinterpreted our location of the driveway.
No, no, your driveway would be fine.
Oh.
But I'm, I'm saying when they come around that curve.
Oh.
And well, you're gonna get stuck with all the snow down.
I had that figured out when I was there too.
No, I just, I just want you to know all the problems ahead of time, because you're gonna build this and you're gonna leave.
Yeah.
And I have to live there.
Well, that's necessary.
That's right in the code. I think we discussed that before, the existing lot of record, you just have to meet the setback.
It is, I mean, if they want you to, if Tracy denied it though, then I think you have to, what they're really asking for is interpretation, because. Well, it's been denied, then they're, they're appealing the denial. So unless, unless Tracy reconsideres, I don't know, if a two-acre or if this provision, I mean, basically, it's, if he's denied it, then he needs to get some relief from this board. And the relief that he can get is an interpretation saying that we disagree with Tracy, which I don't really wanna do it, or like to do, but you can talk to Tracy.
Tracy was actually willing to come here because he said that in his experience and knowledge of what had happened here, he thought it was a perfect build for there. He said, I just have to follow the law, he's the one who told me to actually come to this, to hit the area of variance, and thought it was the, the smart way to be able to do what we were doing.
Yeah. So maybe Tracy wanted to look at that, it's, at code.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, we could schedule a public hearing, do an interpretation, and then give them the relief they're seeking, and Tracy's asked us to do that, we can do it.
Yeah, we can do that, in the meantime, we can get Tracy a call and sell the code book and maybe just not do the public hearing and anything.
It is, it's up, it's up to you guys, but if it's been denied, we have to do something or else.
Is there reasoning for denial, like, you know what I mean, like, is, if he said to come here and that, but if there's not actual, if, if, like I said, I'm not saying.
He can change his mind.
If there was a clarification that was brought up.
That's what I'm saying.
So is there a way of putting it that, you guys cannot make a motion, but just have it on record that you agree with, like, this is how the law, just so we have.
He has to either change his mind, or you have to get us to do something.
So what we'll do is. So just, so we have your verbal agreement that it is meeting everything according to.
But that's, he can still ask us to.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we're gonna do both, we're gonna set the meeting up, initiate a meeting, and then we're also gonna contact him separately and hopefully, he reads the code and says, oh, look at that. And that's, it's good.
But if he's. Yeah. Say it's okay, then the board can decide if.
Great, well, thank you, appreciate that.
We, I think we did, just recently, I've, I had the same, I didn't have the book there, but I, I said lots of record, we did give someone a variance and they asked for it. We said, well, we'll just give them a variance, and I said, I'd set it in.
Yet your, your.
That variance wasn't required.
Right.
They had two variances, one was for a setback, and one was for the lot size, and I said, I thought.
The lot size would be unnecessary.
Lot size was unnecessary.
But you can, you can actually, their appealing is denial, and you can say, we interpret the code to mean you don't need any variance. That's still an official act of this board, something well within your powers to do, and so that's.
Should we do that now and have a, you want to do a public hearing?
I would wait, I'm not, I'm just sure I need to schedule a public hearing, but.
So let's schedule a public hearing and, uh, does that mean?
It works for me, and as long as we have a path forward or a potential path forward, I'm, I'm happy.
The hard part is your, did you have an engineer look at that, did it fit all the squeeze of septic system?
We, we've had everything with that, actually, and that's supposed to. It's actually standard, but it's still smart.
He did the per test and everything there?
So I believe someone else may have done that, that information I don't have with me. But if we need anything, just let them know.
Plan, schedule a public hearing. Yeah, how many, would you schedule a public hearing for interpretation on this for next month, um, October eighteen, is that?
Yeah, well, either one, hold on a second.
Kevin's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I will call Tracy and, yeah, so good, appreciate that.
Two little swells, two big swells.
Yeah.
You're gonna keep them there, right, because that goes right into the front entrance.
Yeah. Over from, uh, from April. Next, the July sixth.
Yeah.
No, we have to leave there. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the swells, I think, well, because they come down to the front entrance and go across the road, he's gonna keep us. Yeah, no, but that was, my own, well, snow removal, you're gonna have to, because the snow, and that swell, that's where it all started, because, because once you put a house in there, you're gonna have more strength. Or you're gonna have more. Well, that even gets worse in the rain, because the trees ain't sucking up the water, so, uh. Like I said, the ones you're. And it works before you walk. Probably, and it keeps, but, and it will, they have. And if this type of swell's come out, it's gonna go up and over. Yeah, there's no need. You know, actually.
To be at, to be at.
Problem. But that, that was.
Very good points.
Hey, your names are close to street, what's going on? I don't know.
It's still not closed?
No, that's, yeah. Was this the one?
Yeah, yeah.
Are they paying the rent somewhere now? That's all I'm, this is all I'm checking out. That's my.
The same, is it?
It is for, for interpretation, interpretation.
Has everybody, has everybody reviewed, is it July sixth?
Yes.
Any?
Can you find anything? It's confused between town planning board member, chairman of the city, town planning board member, Hefelman. Zoning board member, Hefelman, there's a lot of changes in there.
I'm looking for a motion to?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
For the nineteenth? Yeah, that was sense.
Stephanie, the only thing is, my last name is spelled wrong. On the, uh, July nineteenth, where it says member Hefelman made a motion, it's E L.
Oh, okay, that's wrong.
Yes.
We need to have something that dials the meeting stage.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Can't create the important stuff you'd be looking for, yeah, not to yell that for drinking. Thank you.
Do we need to have a, a motion that we? Close the meeting?
Which meeting, the screening?
The nineteenth.
Oh.
I did, I made one motion. What do you mean, it says made a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Am I just missing it?
On the back? Oh.
Okay. Yeah, it's just because it's one sided, if you see it.
That's okay.
It says the back.
Oh, there's one and five, I have two sides.
We have two sides.
You know?
Okay, well, no, no, we're good. Make a motion to accept the, the July nineteenth meeting.
All second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks.
Okay, and then we need somebody to make the other motion, is it, there's a training coming up.
Oh, yeah, we have.
Twenty-eight, is it?
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a couple, there's one in the town of Brunswick too.
Yes.
So there's. So this is the twenty-eighth of September is the one in Brunswick. Is there something else?
There's the one in Valley.
In one of its valley, October.
And there's the one in.
Next week, you have one in, um, Brunswick?
Yes, the twenty.
Night, a couple hours as well.
Yeah, that one's like, just, like, I don't know what, thirty to eight.
I think it's six thirty to nine.
Nine, yeah.
And you forget, it's late. At the Brunswick community center, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
But we're all registered, this is a registration form and.
Whoever, whoever responded to me, you are registered. So I already registered everybody for whichever one it's, thank you.
But this, you don't need enough to technically meet our requirement.
You need two hours. Yeah.
What's that?
But this one need to be enough for?
Yeah, so Hudson Valley, you have four days.
You'll be happy guys.
So you have to get four hours then. That'll be right.
So, yeah, Hudson Valley with four days, right?
Yes.
That's a.
Hudson Valley has sandwiches here.
That's right.
Probably important.
And then we have the other ones that you sent us, um.
Yeah, your.
Webinars.
Yeah, the webinars.
Yeah, there's pretty few, um, different, um.
So however it is, you need to get four, four hours, right?
Yeah.
Well, even if you do the two of Brunswick, you can just do two webinars and then you're caught up for even extra.
Yeah.
Can you do that, roll them over?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You may.
You've accumulated the hours.
Feel a whole week this year.
For the next ten years. And I put the death in the pool, there's this, uh, those six people is men, probably.
Oh, for pool?
That's not, that's not the case.
I don't think so, I think it's.
I don't know, it says, it does say that it needs to, the fence needs to.
Fence.
Craig, I have a question, you were saying, um, you were given the other dimensions for her setback.
Yeah.
What were they?
Front setback was fifty feet, I can check the building code for you, but twenty feet requested, thirty feet different.
I'll check it too.
Okay.
And then at the bottom, there's a red, I would just put red in fence.
Okay.
Or you just code six foot requested two feet.
Okay, but that was your fence, I just came here with the first part, what is?
I think she's gonna ask you for permission to go up to six, and I don't think it's a side triangle. So that's different, that would be three, that was different.
Stephanie, you're great, thank you very much. Did anybody make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, there's.
Just from the pool, yeah. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There you go. All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, no, two public parries. Unless Tracy, yeah, unless Tracy.
They had two lots and then they tried to build.
Yes, true retirement, yes. Is your puppy still warm?
It's approved, it's still.
As it should be. He has a garage and water, is he writing for him?
You guys say, you know, you get them.
Oh, you're purchasing for, uh, uh, U S ecology, uh.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's a whole man, that story. That's your other husband.
Yeah, it's a tight spot, but that's why all these old.
Yes.
Old Yorkies?
Yes.
Pull my way out of here.
I. I need to give you a second. I want us to do emails. But I will make a copy. But I will make a copy.
Should I write your cute for your?
He wants at least a hundred. Right, so at least somebody's got to come and get you all there. What is they? Do they have water in there? Yeah. Oh, you got public water?
The old gray.
Don't, don't use paywall.
I have your numbers. We can.
Right, it should be.
Do you have to share with your score? Your. Yes. Frank, can you write down the names? And then I can look up what I need. Yeah, and then tell you which one. Oh, you did, is that the whole one?
That should be. If you have public water, you don't have to cut it, I guess, right?
Okay. Okay.
I think right now.
If you want to water, you, you know, if you don't. You've got to take it right here.
Oh, that's great. Oh, okay.
And if you don't, you know, I get, you can let each other come over. I'll get.
And you have some in your shot, Jim, like a tribe. I'm going to have to let you know what you're saying.
As long as that is you, just because you're so smart, you know, you turn your backs.
Your garden.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just a great actor.
Well, he's got to get, he's got to get a rally, he's got to get a. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for giving me.
Oh, you're welcome. We always have. In case something else happens, I can get them in, then we'll cut off. Yeah, but you're right, Kevin. We get our, we can, we can have our little bagels, stuff for our, like, our lunch. Hey, Doc? Yeah, it does.
But just right on here.
Oh, you're welcome. You also can, you know, like you did this hour.
But that's like, so whenever they did, maybe they got a variance when they put the hillside. Or they consider that a side road, a side plot. And I thought, yeah, she's not putting the food there yet, so. But it's like, during something, during something.
Tim's on our way down and get the computer.
Okay, she's coming back?
Yeah.